Fall to order tonight, City of Milton Common Council Meeting on January 6th, 2015 at 7:02 PM. Joining us via phone this evening is Alderman Adams and Administrator Hulick. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, which is Public Comments Regarding Items Which Can Be Affected By Council Action. Clerk Berg, do we have anyone signed in?
Just one registration.
Maxine Striegel, did you have anything to address the council on?
Not right this time.
Okay. We will move on then to Agenda Item 3, which is the Approval Of the Consent Agenda. Tonight, Agenda Item A3 and A4 have been tabled. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, motion to approve would be in order.
Sommo.
Second.
We have a motion by Clark, a second by Lotter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 4 is a public hearing. Item A is a public hearing and possible action on the Class A Alcohol License Application for QuickTrip Inc. Doing business as QuickTrip at 295 at 1157 Gateway Drive. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak, they can come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Sure. We'll get you in just one second. Agenda Item 4B. Is a public hearing and possible action, or I'm sorry, we should take the possible action. So Agenda Item 4A today was to take action on the Class A Alcohol License Application for QuickTrip. At Personnel and Finance, that was recommended for approval by the council. Do we have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion by Clark, second by Vruwink. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 4B is a public hearing and possible action on Final Resolution 2015-01, Vacating A Portion Of Chicago Street. And actually, I apologize. Would you like to speak now on the QuickTrip? We'll look my QuickTrip up just to say a couple of words quickly. I apologize.
That's okay. So from our understanding with the new store, the current store that we have in town, we do not sell alcohol or beer. Just the key points that we wanted to bring up to the city council members with our new facilities are beer coolers or beer rooms. We'd just like to point out that all of those products are set on timed locks. If you go into certain convenience stores or even some of our older stores, you would see displays open in the public where it would be easy for certain people to possibly steal those items or easily get them. With our beer cooler setup with the timers and the locks, it's very safe for our coworkers and our customers that at city regulations, times they automatically lock. So, you know, that's something that we're kind of proud of, that it keeps it safe for the community. It's all in one general area, and we have several surveillance cameras in there too, which is a good safety feature for us, keeping an eye on that stuff. Our alcohol sales and tobacco policy, we do not have any coworkers over the age of 18 that normally work at our stores that are selling alcohol purposes to minors. We don't worry about that. And then our policies, we have to card and scan everyone that appears over the age of 14. So, and the district leader from Madison-Janesville area, aside from doing the city and state ID checks, we also, I have my own secret shoppers that visit our stores three to four times a year of coworkers that are newly 21, that they go in and also do secret shops to make sure that we're applying to the state laws and the city conservants that come up.
Great, any comments from the council or questions? Okay, thank you very much, welcome to the community. Agenda Item 4B is the public hearing and possible action on Final Resolution 2015-01, Vacating A Portion Of Chicago Street. Administrator Hulick, do you want to take that?
Sure. Basically, this item and the next couple of items on the agenda are in regard to the QuickTrip development that was just previously discussed. There's a number of items that we'll need to take action on tonight, starting with this one, which vacates the former right-of-way for County Highway Chicago Street, which has long since been abandoned and removed, and now it's just cornfield. So this is actually just the formalized action in order to vacate that right-of-way so that parcel can be created in the future, in those upcoming agenda items.
Great, the recommended action tonight is to approve Resolution 2015-01, Vacating A Portion Of Chicago Street, formerly County Highway L.
Sure.
Second.
Motion by Adams, second by Lotter.
Just to, Mayor, Attorney? Just to make sure the mayor, the public hearing's been opened, correct, for public comment?
I apologize, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 5, under New Business, is discussion and possible action on a certified survey map along Sunnyside Drive, creating one lot and one outlot. Administrator Hulick?
Sure. These next three items, I can kind of explain all three of them at once, it might just be easier. After we vacated the street that which just previously did in the previous action, that allows for the creation of the QuickTrip lot. However, before we can first do that, we need to create a new lot line which bisects privately owned and city-owned property. So this CSM creates the one lot for QuickTrip, as well as an outlot to the city. In the next item you'll see on the agenda, we will swap those pieces of land. There'll be, there's a triangular piece of land that's created both along Sunnyside Drive and along Highway 59 under the first CSM. Then we'll swap those two, so the private ownership then takes control of the triangle that was previously under city ownership and vice versa, in order to create a more logical squared-off kind of lot. And then in Item C, QuickTrip will then divide that one lot into two lots in order to create their development parcel, as well as a second commercial development parcel south of that along Highway 59 and Gateway. So those are the three items kind of in order, and that's the reason they're in the order they are, is to take action in a progressive way that matches the intent of those land divisions.
Great, so for the first agenda item tonight, the recommendation from both the administration and Plan Commission is the recommended city council approval of the subject CSM, creating one lot and one outlot along Gateway Drive.
Sommo.
Second.
Motion by Clark, second by Lotter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 5B is discussion and possible action regarding a land exchange between adjoining owners located along Gateway Drive, Resolution 2015-02. Administrator Hulick has just spoken on this. The recommended action tonight is to approve Resolution 2015-02, Executing The Land Exchange Between The City Of Milton And The Adjoining Land Owner. And Attorney Slater, do we have the documents necessary for that?
Yes, I've made the resolution.
Great.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about the other documents, yes, those were filed today, but...
Great.
Yes, yes.
Great. That is the recommended action, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Welch, second by Vruwink. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 5C is discussion and possible action on CSM along Sunnyside Drive, creating two lots. The recommended action today is from both the administration and the Plan Commission, is that the city council approve the subject CSM, creating one...
Two lots.
Oh, that's the wrong agenda item. Yeah, there's a typo in our agenda packet. Creating two lots. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion by Clark, second by Vruwink. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could you, I think, since we have so many people in the audience, could you just, or Al, explain the reasoning for the two lots for QuickTrip? Just in case we have people wondering that who are sitting out here in the audience.
Sure. Administrator Hulick, do you want to handle that?
I didn't hear the question at all.
She's asking what the reason is for there being a CSM to create two lots.
Because QuickTrip will actually develop the northern lot, and then there'll be a southern lot, which will be a separate commercial development. And they haven't identified a user yet, as far as I know, in my recent conversations with the developer. They're still actively seeking a user for that southern lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 5D is discussion and possible action to approve the submitted operator license applications.
Okay, so we have three new operator licenses, license applications for Ryan C. Crandall, Teresa E. Getchel, and Annalise M. Modica. They have all successfully passed background checks and completed the responsible beverage server training.
Great. Recommended action tonight is to approve the operator licenses. I believe they were recommended for approval at Personnel and Finance?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Sommo.
Motion by Clark, second by Lotter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, Agenda Item 5E. Discussion And Possible Action On Deciding The Need For A Spring Primary Election. Clerk Berg?
Okay, so, as of 5:00 PM today, we did receive nomination papers for the mayoral race from Brett J. Fraser, Anna Anisa M. Welch, and Tom Chesmore, which is more than double the spots open. So state statutes do provide some guidance on this. Just 8.11 hyphen, I'm sorry, parent 1, parent A. A primary may be held in any city for the nomination of candidates for city office. When a majority of all the members of the governing body decide upon a spring primary for any specific election, they shall so provide not later than three days after the deadline for filing nomination papers, which would be the ninth. So that's why it's on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Yeah, we were puzzled because in the last election, there were three mayoral candidates without a primary.
Okay, can I?
Well, just to, in the past, the council has elected not to have a primary. I don't know that it was an agenda item the last time when we did have the three candidates, but it was the council's discretion to call that primary. So this is an option that the council has, is something that you should be aware, that you can do. I'll open it up for discussion.
Initially, initially about a month ago, I approached Administrator Hulick about having a primary if we had more than two candidates. But I told him when I asked for this agenda item that it wouldn't be for this election because it wasn't enough time, and I didn't, and I wasn't aware of always running, but it would be something I wanted for the next election because it's so close to people filing. And the reason I brought that forward is because I had a couple of people approach me and say, the last time we had three candidates, that really having a mayor that gets less than 40% of the votes isn't really, doesn't look good for a community that we don't have a majority. And that's why I talked about doing this. And my intention was, when I told Mr. Hulick, was that, you know, there was a possible chance we could get three candidates again, and I didn't want this to be for this election because, because people wouldn't have had enough time to know that. So that was my intention of asking this to be put on.
Clerk Berg?
I just want to clarify that I also requested this to be on here because there were three people. So, and state statutes do guide us on this, and it's my opinion that there should be a primary when there's more than double the seats open.
Additional discussion from the council?
I don't think it's necessary.
I actually think, I think that we pretty much have our hands tied if we have to follow the state statute.
You don't have to have a primary, but you do have to have it on February 17th if you want it, and you do have to decide tonight, because it has to be done within three days, correct?
Yes.
Well, I guess I would agree with Don that it is important to look at how we're voting and that the person that does ultimately win should have a majority of votes, but that in the case of an election, they should know in advance that they are facing a primary, so that they are making plans for that in advance, and preparing for the opportunity for a primary, and they're not just sort of blasted with that after the fact.
That's actually what we're doing now. We're giving public notice, and we're doing it according to state statutes.
Right, but they wouldn't have had time to prepare for it, going into the nomination process, knowing that that's a possibility.
I did legally notice it in publication as well.
Well, I think, you know, there's no way to know until 5:00 on filing deadline how many people are running.
Right.
So certainly, there's no earlier that you could really say, unless the council were to set a policy of doing primaries.
We could set a policy for two years from now.
Sure.
And that's what I think would be more, because my vision, or what I can see happening sometimes, there could be two people running, and somebody didn't like the one person running, so say, well, I'm going to run because I might siphon votes off from this other person. I don't want that possibility to happen. But I don't want it to happen for this election because we didn't have this policy in place for this election when people took out papers.
I think it'll be important to note too, and I don't have an opinion on this, but the council two years from now would certainly not have to follow any policy that was set by this council in regard to having the primary.
Right, but at least if we set that policy saying in two years, then the council would have to re-explore it and redo it again. And I think, again, I think it would be fitting to have a primary, most communities do.
What's the expense involved in having a primary?
The expense is already in the approved budget.
Do you know what it is?
I don't know what it is offhand, but it was approved in the budget.
We budget in the anticipation of every election that we could have, so it is included in the budget.
I think that this is actually the reason for having a primary because of the amount of people that are running for this. Now, we, Elena and I had already talked about possibly doing a charter ordinance so that for future elections, everything is done the same way. But then I am also interested in what Mark has to say legally. If the state statute says that we need to have a primary, I mean, are we, do we have to do this, or?
As has been noted, the statute makes the holding of a primary elective on the part of the council in this situation where you have more than double the candidate, available, more than double the candidates for an office. So in other words, we have more than two candidates for one office. You can have a primary, you're not required to have a primary. And so, and one way you have a primary is the way you're considering it now, on a yearly basis, when there's a sufficient number of candidates that file their nomination papers. That's one way, and then it's reviewed by the council, and the council makes a determination each year whether or not to have a primary. That's one way to address it. The second way to address it is by passing a charter ordinance so that there is no discretion on the part of the council. And then whenever you have three or more candidates for an office, you automatically have a primary. So that, those are the two ways to do it. So, which addresses, a charter ordinance addresses the concerns that are being expressed here tonight at least, that is, one, notice, and two, to have, to have a primary where it's needed. Those are the two concerns I had heard tonight, and so that's one way you can do it, but it would need to be through that process. Otherwise, if you're not interested in the charter ordinance, you do need to review this each year whenever there's three or more candidates for an office.
I think that, I think that we should go ahead and have the primary. So I guess, just to move the discussion along, I'll make a motion that we do...
Can you folks speak into the mic, please?
Sorry, Dave, can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that we should go ahead and have this primary because we know that the notices have already been out. And just to move the discussion along here, I'll make a motion that we do have the primary and see what everybody else follows suit with.
That's a motion from Alder Person Clark to hold a February 17th primary in the race for mayor. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies. Do we have additional?
I'll make a motion that we create a charter ordinance where we, where we hold a primary election in two years, starting in the next mayoral race, in two years, but not for this one.
We can, what we can do is, maybe your motion means this, to direct staff to research and prepare some information for the council to pursue the charter ordinance. There's some cost, I believe, a referendum.
Well, it would have to be done tonight, so it couldn't be done for this year.
Well, correct. So the motion is to direct staff to look into a charter ordinance to require a primary in races where there's three or more candidates for a seat.
Right, but not in this current election cycle.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Vruwink, second by Ruch. Any further discussion?
What happens with council? Then does that mean that we have to have, that...
That can be a discussion.
Are we just talking about a mayor?
I'm talking about the mayoral race.
Okay, so you're not talking about council where there's like five people running, or?
Right, I would like to see it for the mayor race.
The specifics of the ordinance, of the charter ordinance can be dealt with, you know, when that information comes forward, and the council at that time, who may very well look different than this one.
Are you sure that it wouldn't just have to be a blanket if there's more, three or more candidates? Or can you get that specific on it to be just one race? I just want it for clarity.
What all the statute provides is that a city may provide by charter ordinance, whenever three or more candidates file nomination papers for a city office, a primary to nominate candidates for the office shall be held. So it doesn't direct that, it needs to apply to every, it's silent on whether or not it needs to apply to every race. So I would say, given that it's charter ordinance, the city would have the option of applying it to just the mayoral race if it wants, as opposed to also applying it to any other elective office.
And the motion tonight is to direct staff to do research and prepare a charter ordinance to bring back to council at a future date. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just going to abstain.
That is four in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Motion carries. So for tonight, we do need action on the primary, whether or not to hold it. We had a motion fail, for lack of a second, to create a primary on February 17th. Do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion not to have a primary for this election.
That's a motion by President Vruwink, second by Alder Person Lotter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, four to one, with one abstention. Okay, Agenda Item F. Discussion And Possible Action On Authorizing An Update To The Junction Square Downtown Plan. Administrator Hulick, would you like to start this off?
Sure, I can take it off. This is an idea that the Downtown Development Advisory Committee, or DDAC, as it's commonly referred to, has been taking around pretty much since I came, came to Milton back in September. And in several discussions with the committee, where we reviewed the old 2005 plan, and it talks about that, some of its, you know, the good points and some of its deficiencies. It became clear that that plan wasn't on the same level of the plan as what was conducted for Goodrich Square back in 2013. And it, in essence, kind of puts Merchant Row or Junction Square at an inherent disadvantage when compared to Goodrich Square, because it doesn't have the same level of detail. And when I say same level of detail, I don't mean that it's not a good plan, and I don't mean that the plan needs to be scrapped. But what I do mean is that it doesn't have the same level of detail as far as cost analysis and engineering that went into the Goodrich Square plan. So when we look at future planning initiatives and how we'd like to fund some downtown development activities, both in Goodrich and in Junction, we would like to see those two downtown be on equal footing. And not having any really cost or engineering input in the 2005 Merchant Row plan, again, puts that side of town kind of at an inherent disadvantage. In the sense that it's hard for us to plan for it, we don't know exactly really what we're, what we're up against as far as costs and timelines. So it has been suggested by DDAC that there'd be a planning initiative in the Junction Square side of town, similar to the Goodrich Square side of town, but similar in outcome, but not similar in approach, in the sense that we won't have to do as much work. We're really just taking the 2005 plan and take drilling down to that next level where we can get some costs and some engineering input onto that, onto that plan. So it wouldn't be a full-blown downtown development where we scrap the 2005 plan and start all over. This would be really just taking it to the next level, again, in order to get those two sides of town on equal footing. This is something that the committee has expressed an interest in, and Chairperson Linda Labor has been kind of spearheading a public outreach about this concept, and has talked to a lot of business owners, not only in Junction Square, but in Goodrich Square, about this concept. And I know that she has drafted a letter for the council, which is included in your packet, and I'm sure she's out there in the audience tonight. And if she has any additional comments, I would certainly probably add to, add to mine, if not more. I'm sure she has more up to the information.
I'm going to invite Linda Labor up to the podium. Earlier in 2014, we transitioned, as you recall, Goodrich Square into what became the Downtown Development Action Committee. The hope was that we would get interested stakeholders, citizens, people outside City Hall, to start to take initiative and take ownership of those two downtowns. That is now gaining some momentum, and so I'll ask Linda Labor to tell us how things are going and what the specific request is of the council tonight.
Is this on? No, you can't. Do you get a red light?
No.
They cannot hear.
Is that why you didn't wear a tie though?
Well, can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Very excited to be here on behalf of DDAC. This is kind of a be careful what you wish for and be careful what you ask sort of situation for me. This has become something that, the more I get into it, the more excited I get, and the more I'm learning, and the more I find that we have just a tremendous group of businesses, organizations, that have some really interesting and dedicated thoughts to this project. So we do ask the council to seriously consider the use of the TIF funds for this project. There are so many terrific ideas, there are so many people who care about this community, recognizing as we look at growth and development that if we don't take a planned approach to change, it will happen without us. I continue, as I, at the risk of being redundant, the conversation I'm having with business owners, organizations, have been really tremendous. They are excited, they are wanting to see change, they realize that it might be uncomfortable, that we have to all stretch, we all have to contribute in these ways. The committee is working on not only looking at how we can make our squares better, but what we can do to make them interesting for all avenues, for the schools, for businesses to use and to grow, and so that they're solid. We're looking at ways that when we are inviting people to come and spend money in our city, whether it's to invest, or to live, or as a tourist, or to shop, what are they going to see? And will we have enough here to keep them engaged? And, and will we have enough here to keep them engaged, so that we do see some successes there? So, there's a lot on our plate. Um, it seems that with each conversation, I find more that we're adding. But it is very exciting, uh, whether we're looking at, um, cleanup, or a facade improvement, or downtown events that can help growth and change. So, we do very much ask you to consider this. Recognizing that time is of the essence, um, we would like to have this considered for the budgets for next year, which, as I understand it, are in October. We actually only have nine meetings left to formulate a plan and dot our i's and cross our t's. So, we would ask for your consideration this evening and for a decision on that. Um, if you have any questions of me either this evening or at a later date, please, of course, always feel free to contact me. I would be happy to discuss, uh, exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Linda this evening?
Yes, I do. Um, Linda, I wish that you would ask our lotter to the school district and ask them to reconsider using our parks that we have on that side of town. When I was rec director, we used to have a lot of traffic go to that side of town, which I think that side of town needs. Everything now is directed at Scholberg Park, and they never make it to that part of town. It would certainly help Quick Trip and some of the other businesses that are over there to get that traffic flowing. There's three baseball parks that could be utilized there that aren't being utilized, um, as much as they could be. And I, and I think of the S, the school district, um, because there is a parking problem at Scholberg when they play all their games there, which makes it difficult. I mean, all the parks should be used, not just one park, because the main concern is that they have concession stand money. But would be, if we want to, the businesses support the school district, I think the school district needs to know that they also have to help support the businesses.
And that's, that's an excellent point on that, and I will be happy to formulate that if we could, uh, meet a little bit one-on-one to, to, to work on that language.
They, they know. I've, I've talked to them, and it's something that I think they want to work on as well. We just need to get, sit down and do that, that we can direct traffic to all ends of town to help the businesses there.
And I think also, um, it is my understanding that is also in process with the chamber, with Danny and the school district working on. We're recognizing that, um, we need to make use of our human capital and the, the entities that draw that in, whether it's the school district, the library, et cetera. So, I know that there is some partnerships involved in that, and we are trying to recreate some better marketing on that end, and we can include that as well.
My idea that I floated to them was that, you know, there were games and activities there, talking about having, you know, some of the businesses maybe provide coupons or something where families could come into the, you know, in the store, whether it be Quick Trip to get pizza, take home, whether it be, um, a family restaurant to come in and maybe have, you know, a free drink or something. I think it would enhance everybody. I think, I think, I think it would work to get more traffic there.
I agree with you completely on that, and that also ties in with part of, part of what we're looking at for Junction is to create a public shelter of sorts where we could have either families come together, or even the schools host there. If there's baseball games, then let's do hot dogs and a drink and a cookie or something, and, and have it be where the school can fundraise there, or that the businesses can also work out of. So, that's also part of what we're working on for that area.
We've put, as a city, we've put probably forty to fifty thousand dollars in the parks there. Um, we built dugouts at all the parks. We, a whole new infield at Liberty Park, and since we've done that, it's actually been used less than what we used it before. And I just think that it's something that we could try to get to be utilized again.
I agree with you completely. Thank you.
Alder Person Welch.
Don, doesn't the school district have like a rec director or something?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they do.
So, I'm wondering if that person maybe could be invited to one of the meetings? And then my other question is, would you be willing to come back and do, give an update to the council in a few months?
Absolutely. We have our first DDAC meeting January twenty-third, in which case I will have an agenda for the year for our meetings involving both planning, um, with the, the projected TIF programs and the planning there. But a- as far as shelters, as far as the committees, I want that laid out so that, um, we have, we understand what our timeframe is, but also so that businesses can see, if it's public, then businesses can see when they might need to, to be a part of it and when not. So, part, built into that agenda, I would like to come back at the end of each quarter. So, at the end of March and at the end of June, updating the council on our progress. We would also like your feedback and your concerns very much, so that as we're working through this progress, we can address that as we go along, so that by the time we do get to the end of September, we really have a well-thought-out, formulated plan with input from all, from everyone, from the school, from the council, from the city, from the businesses, so that we're all working together, making, you know, hearing our voices, but finding something. There's, finding those happy mediums that makes it work for everybody.
Right.
I, again, I want, I like to say that I don't want to be critically screwed, because in their defense, they operate on limited budget too.
Of course.
Makes it easier for them to put everything there, and somehow we could compromise and try to help everybody. Because I understand why they do what they do, and it's not their fault, because they have limited funds as well. But I think it's something that in discussion, we could make some compromises.
This is actually a much bigger pro- uh, topic, Don, in that I don't think that the community really understands the level to which businesses contribute to our community. Taxes aside, um, just in my very informal conversations, I would venture to guess we probably give three to four to five hundred thousand annually from our businesses and goods, services, donations. Our community must understand the value of having those businesses in here. With the Community Awards Banquet, we've developed two awards. We're gonna be soliciting for, uh, recommendations for that award through the community and businesses. We have to understand that partnership, and our businesses give so much. So, that, to that vein, we do need to emphasize with the school how important it is that with the traffic they bring in, they be willing to, um, disseminate that into the community.
I would, I would be glad to, when we had that conversation with the school district, to be in on that. You still have to do it after three o'clock, because I am not teaching for the school district.
So, do you need a motion?
Uh, yes, uh, just briefly, I want to, just so everyone's clear, uh, DDAC is, is focused right now in this agenda item on Junction Square.
Correct.
But there is a committee structure that addresses other areas of the city and other, other areas of our community.
Absolutely. We have identified two block captains. One, we reference them, uh, fondly as block captains. So, one for Goodrich Square, one for Junction Square. So, because that Goodrich Square has had these dollars attached, they have had success with the splash pad, but also because they do need some really bigger structural things, you know, the removal of the police department, the, the, the improvements on Parkview. That, that's some pretty big stuff that's gonna go on there. That really is more kind of the meat and potatoes before we get to some of the cherry. That's why, and, and also Junction doesn't need quite as much. I mean, they're really, they've done a lot. We need a little bit more polishing, and they're gonna be in a really good position. So, while we are really focusing our attentions on Junction Square, a lot of ideas are coming and still percolating for Goodrich. I mean, there's just, it's, it's just amazing the number of conversations that we're having and, and ideas that I'm getting, um, from everybody. It's, it's a great, there's just a lot of energy and a really terrific committee.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your, your leadership and then for everyone's participation in that committee. Yes, motion.
Are we, um, excuse me, are we, we're, this is, our decision tonight will decide whether or not we will use those TIF funds?
It, the, the contract will likely be over twenty-five thousand dollars, um, to do this plan, which means we have to send it out for proposals.
Right, but.
So, it's, tonight's action would be to solicit proposals for, uh, a merchant row plan, or Junction Square plan, I suppose we should call it. Um, and then that would be presented back to the council at a future date. The decision to use TIF funds would be made at that same date.
I guess I was under the impression that, that.
Can I, can I jump in there?
Yeah, go ahead, Administrator Hulik.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think I heard Linda's question, um, but I, I, I gathered it from Brett's response. Um, you know, our, our hope would be to, uh, get something in place that we could bring back to the council, um, either, either at the next meeting, um, which would be, which would be ideal, uh, but if not, in February. Um, you know, we wanna, we don't want to truncate this so much. We don't want to try to condense this so much that, um, you know, we lose out, uh, uh, on some of the opportunities to get public input, and, and we want to have a complete picture for the council to consider, uh, when we go into the twenty sixteen budget cycle. Um, the, the one point I, I will make about the, uh, about the contract, um, is that, uh, contracts for professional purposes do not require a, uh, an, an RFP, um, so much the contract that was just approved tonight for Baxter and Woodman, uh, that don't, don't need to go for RFP. If it's the council's wish, we certainly can do that. Um, we have a unique opportunity with Vandewell and Associates where they have offered to, uh, provide both this plan update and our comprehensive plan update, um, for, uh, for a, a very fair price. Uh, and we're able to cut, uh, a considerable amount off of, uh, what their initial proposal was to us back in October of last year. Uh, if we're able to kind of consolidate these two, uh, planning initiatives together and, uh, take advantage of economies of scale, or we have, you know, one public meeting where they talk about both these topics, as opposed to having two separate meetings and things of that nature. So, um, that, that's just the point that I will make. If, if it's the council's, uh, um, wish to have an RFP, we certainly can go that direction. But I just wanted to make you aware that we do have the opportunity, um, to realize some cost savings by doing both of these initiatives at once. Um, and that, and that we wouldn't be violating our own policy as far as professional services by not going out to RFP. But it's also nothing your choice. I just wanted to bring that up.
So, how would that motion be, Al?
Uh, how would the motion be?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the question? I, I think, I think actually, um, uh, the mayor paraphrased it pretty well. I think it would just be something simple. Uh, the council makes a motion to authorize the city administration to seek, uh, proposals for, uh, the update to the, to the Junction Square. Um, we have a proposal in hand, in essence, from Vandewell, um, so we could bring that forward. Or if you wanted other proposals, we could do that, but it would certainly push the timeframe back. Um, we wouldn't be able to get that back to you in January. It would likely be end of February if we were going to seek additional proposals. So, it's really just a amendment act, sort of how you word it, uh, it adds to what your preference is. Um, are, are you comfortable with, with the proposal that we have from Vandewell, understanding that you guys haven't seen it yet? I, I know that. Uh, but we would bring that in January. If you wanted multiple proposals, um, it would be probably later in February then.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I mean, it's my recommendation to go with Vandewell, but it's, it's your decision, so.
Generally, we would, we would go with Vandewell. In the past, we've done that, but during the budget process, the council asked for the update to the comprehensive plan to be, to be bid or sent out for proposals. That's a part of the economies of scale that Mr. Hulik is talking about. Uh, the total project cost in that, that proposal we got just the other day was thirty-seven thousand? Is that right? Something like that?
For, for the entire, for both pieces together?
For the entire, for both projects.
For both pieces together, I think it was fifty-nine.
Okay.
Which is, which, um, back in October, when they sent us a proposal for co- the comprehensive plan update and Junction Square, separate pieces, that came in at about sixty-seven thousand. So, they were able to cut a considerable amount off by not having to go through an RFP process and by able to consolidate those two efforts. Uh, with that being said, we would pay for, we break that apart in how we paid for it, um, so that the total package, and like I said, was one fifty-nine. Um, and I think thirty-five of that, uh, was for Junction Square, and twenty-four was for the council plan update. But again, we could bring that all back to the council in January if that's your, if that's your wish. So, I just wanted to make that distinction clear, that the whole fifty-nine thousand would not be paid out of TIF. Um, that we would separate those two contracts in order to make sure that the funding sources were appropriate for their uses.
But we don't have any other RFPs yet.
We do not.
No, not at this time. No, we do not.
So, so the question for the council this evening is, and remember, cost is not always the key in planning. There's a little bit of an art to that. Uh, we have a relationship with Vandewell, but the council had indicated in the budget process that, uh, desired to do an RFP for the comprehensive plan update. The Vandewell proposal wraps both together, um, at what we believe is a good price. Um, but the decision first for the council is if you want to see a request for proposals sent out, uh, if you're going to send it out for one, you may as well send it out for both. Um, and then the, uh, if that's your desire, then you would make the recommended motion, which is to solicit proposals for an update to that plan. And I would, I would suggest, uh, the comprehensive plan, which we budgeted for.
I, I would, I would agree with, I, I would agree with just on the mayor kind of phrase that, um, the only, the only drawback with going out to RFPs is that will, it, it will push the process back.
Right.
Um, we may get a better price. Um, I think it's unlikely, but we may, and that's, that's, it may be worth the risk, but it will push the process back, um, you know, probably forty-five days at least.
Well, I don't, I don't.
That's a drawback.
So, that would be March? No, because we're in the beginning of January. I mean, I guess when we, when we state our intention at budget process, I feel more comfortable following what our stated intention was. Um, I don't like to push the process back, but I also think that it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna push it back that much. So, I guess those are my thoughts on it.
Well, I think it is, is important to remember that these planning documents will direct our actions for the next, you know, multiple decades. Um, certainly forty-five days is not as good as fifteen days, but at the end of the process.
I mean, yeah, when you're looking at what kind of quality of work we're anticipating, I guess the, I, I don't want to rush the process, because like the mayor said, we're going to be using these in future councils. We're planning for future councils here too, um, so we have to keep that in mind.
I'll make a motion.
I think, my opinion is perfectly fair and reasonable. I just wanted to point that out.
Yep.
Never gonna get that motion out, am I? Don't work.
We got time.
I'll make a motion that we go out for RFPs to include a separate price on the Junction Square plan.
Junction Square plan and the comprehensive plan update?
Yes.
Those two parts.
Because that would be paid for by the TIF, is my understanding accurate?
Yes, with the comprehensive plan paid for by the previous agreements from our budget and the Goodrich, or, I'm sorry, Junction Square paid for by TIF.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Person Clark. Okay, uh, we'll amend the motion to just the Junction Square plan. I, I don't believe we actually need council direction to get the, the proposals.
I think if I heard Mark's comment, we, we can't take action on the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
That's what he says, but truth, truthfully, we can.
And that's okay, because you guys, uh, the councils are to give me direction to do that, so it, it, I mean, it wouldn't, you wouldn't need to take action on it again at night, if I understand. It's gotten in and out, I'm missing pieces of it, but I think, I just wanted to.
Motion is to, uh, to direct, uh, staff to solicit proposals for an update of the Junction Square plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, uh, by Alder Person Clark, second by Alder Person Lottar. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
But that remains to be seen. Maybe not. It could be close. That remains to be seen.
This will be, this will be on a future council, uh, agenda, uh, once we have proposals, probably in March, uh, honestly. But I think you've seen that the council's intention here is to proceed with the update of the Junction Square plan. Uh, so you can report that back to the committee and thank them for all their efforts and for the letter and, uh, and for doing what we hope they would do, which is take, uh, take ownership of, of the city, which is great. Thank you very much. General items.
I have a question. Um, we were talking about our five-year capital plan. How, where are we with that? Um, because I think that that kind of goes along with the discussions of the downtowns and the major plans that we have for the city.
It absolutely does. Administrator Hulik and I were just talking about that the other day. Uh, Mr. Hulik, can you give an update on where we are with the CIP?
Yes, um, when I, when I started back in September, um, that, that planning process had kind of started, had been underway, and then with somewhat the plug button was pressed on it, um, during the recruitment between, uh, your sort of super myself. We re-engaged that process back in October, um, and have, have started that, uh, kind of process again. Um, it's, it's really down to just putting the details together, and that sounds like it's, that sounds like it may just be kind of, um, dotting i's and crossing k's, but it's actually where a lot of the substance for the plan gets into it. Uh, we have the list of projects, and now we need to describe those projects, and, uh, we're, we're working through that process. Our, our goal is to have that completed by the end of January. And then we would like to bring that to the council, the full complete plan to the council in February. Uh, that's, that's our goal. Um, we're working with, uh, Rukert Milkie, who is a consultant, uh, you know, who will then take that information and, and, uh, you know, put it into a more presentable fashion than what it is right now. Right now, it's just about seven or eight very large spreadsheets with a lot of numbers on it that, uh, probably wouldn't make sense to folks, uh, who haven't been involved in, uh, like we have at the staff level. But, uh, so I'm not sure how much work it will take, it will take to polish that up in pretty, in a more presentable fashion. Um, but the good news is, is we knew going into the twenty fifteen budget session, there wasn't going to be a lot of capital items, and that's exactly what happened in the twenty fifteen budget session, with a lot of capital items put in there. So, we, we, we knew we didn't have to hurry and, and kind of cram to get it done. So we, we, we knew we didn't have to hurry and, and kind of cram to get it done, uh, because the big decisions will start in 2016. So we bought ourselves some time, uh, just through the, the natural budget, budget creation process. So our goal is again to bring that back to you, hopefully in February, March at the latest, uh, with the complete document. Um, and then, uh, what would be, what would be my preference moving forward is that that would be reviewed at an annual basis. So when we have projects like Junction Square, uh, where we start to attach some costs to some of those items, we can put those right into the process, um, and they can be ranked and judged and prioritized accordingly against those other projects that are out there that already have the value besides them. But I'd also like to take a look at it at annual basis to make sure that our cost estimates are still accurate. Things change all the time with oil prices and steel prices and, um, things like that. So we want to make sure that we've got the best product moving forward. And I would just look at this to be part of an annual budget process. On an annual basis, the CIP will just be part of the budget process, uh, and that's how I'd like to see that unfold moving forward, so.
I asked Administrator Hulick the other day to make sure that there's a draft of the CIP. Um, to, to me, uh, by, no later than the end of February, so that we can present this to the council for your input and further direction, no later than March. Um, this project got sidetracked because we had some turnover, uh, in 2014 on staff, but we are back on track. Um, the work done by our department directors to get this process, uh, to where it is, is, is very good. Um, we have exceptionally talented and knowledgeable department directors who have put together, um, a fairly complicated set of capital needs, looking reasonably far into the future. Uh, so that's exciting. We'll be able to wrap in things like Junction Square, Goodrich Square, um, other projects that we want to see in the city. And really that project then, so the public understands a capital improvement plan takes into account not just the projects you want to complete, uh, but it also provides a strategy for how to afford them over time. Uh, places different levels of priority on different projects, um, price tags, and it fits it all together. Um, that's something that, uh, that this city has not had, um, in, in as robust a fashion as we soon will. Uh, the process has been, um, certainly lengthy, um, and hard work on the part of our department directors especially. Um, but it is coming to a, a point where you'll be reviewing that here in the next thirty to forty-five days. Excellent question. Um, next meeting will be January twentieth, 2015. Do we have any Alderman persons reports?
I would just like to remind everyone that we do have a survey online and here at City Hall for the Parks and Recreation in the city of Milton. And we would like to hear from as many people as we could. We're looking for what you would like. Um, and our next meeting is going to be January nineteenth. So please come and give your input, help us put together what our goals should be.
Great. Any other Alderman persons reports?
Uh, yes, we, uh, at the Public Works Committee, at Public Works Committee, uh, we wanted to have an update on the punch list.
Yep.
And we are hoping to have that on the agenda so we all hear how things are not going.
Yep, we have that already listed on the future agenda. That will be, uh, coming up.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Any other Alderman persons reports?
Yes, I want to remind everybody of the events that are being sponsored by our public library. On January twenty-fourth, from ten-thirty AM to twelve noon, there's snow shoeing at South Goodrich Park. Um, our Rock County Parks coordinator, Dave Hoffman, um, will give a free snow shoeing lesson. And the class and equipment are free. So parents are asked to stay with children under twelve years old, snow permitting, which looks like it might not be an issue right now. Uh, backup date is January thirty-first. So this is for kids seven and older. And Snowy Outdoor Adventures Two is Skate with the Janesville Jets at Air Products Ice Rink, January, January twenty-fifth, from one to two-thirty. And Snowy Adventure, Outdoor Adventures Three, Snowman at the Library. And this is going to be February seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and eighteenth. So just be looking in the Courier for more details for those events.
Great. Any other Alderman persons reports? Okay, um, I just want to thank our Public Works Department for the way they've been handling, um, what we eventually knew would happen, this winter would show up. Um, we made it through, I believe, all of December without having to, uh, to plow. And now we, we have the problem of snow. But, uh, they've been getting the streets clean. Um, they've been doing the very best that they can. Um, it's, uh, it's not an easy task to keep everybody happy this time of year. Uh, but they are doing the very best they can and the streets, I think, uh, look, look very good. So thank you for the hard work. I want to also thank our, our, our police officers. Uh, we had a situation with a, a bus, uh, the other day and of course everyone's, this is the first time everyone's driving in snow, um, so we get to deal with all sorts of, uh, good times there. Police and fire, um, certainly do a great job all the time, but especially at this time of year. It's a little bit cold to do those jobs and, uh, you know, if you, if you're out there, give them a break, uh, slow down. Um, the, uh, the last thing that I do want to point out on a, on a slightly, uh, less jovial note is, um, the fire, uh, department has been in the news, um, a little bit lately. There are some funding issues that have cropped up, uh, each of the last few years that have caused the city and the townships to have to, uh, fund budget shortfalls. Um, those are dollars that were not taxed. Those are dollars that have come right out of our fund balance, which is what we use to ensure that the city is in a good financial position. Um, the, uh, there was an article that ran in the Gazette, um, either yesterday or today, um, that seemed to, uh, to call into question whether there, there truly is a need, um, to examine the issues facing the fire department. I want to make one thing clear. Our firefighters, our EMTs, our, our staff there are doing the very best job that they can. Uh, they are incredibly dedicated to this community and they are doing nothing wrong. What has changed is the economics of running a fire department and running an ambulance service. And it is our responsibility as a city, and hopefully the town feels the same, to take steps to recognize the new economy and the new dynamics at play in financing a sustainable fire department operation and make changes where appropriate, uh, to make sure that sustainability continues into the future as it had in the past up until the last couple of years. Uh, the city of Milton provides at no cost the use of our former Public Works Department. We provide at a very low cost, uh, financial, uh, bookkeeping services, uh, for the department, uh, as well as other support, um, both accepted and some offered but not accepted. Uh, we are doing everything we possibly can to keep the joint fire department operating and operating well. We feel that there may be an opportunity for the Fire Commission tomorrow night to take action, uh, to bolster that sustainability and ensure that the fire departments, the EMTs, the chief, the deputy chiefs, uh, all the staff there continue to get paychecks, that the bills continue to get paid on time, and so that we don't find ourselves at the end of 2015 in the same place that we did at the end of 2013 and 2014, uh, with a significant budget shortfall. I don't know how to run, uh, a fire department. I'm not a fire chief. I don't believe we have any fire chiefs on the council and I don't believe we have any on the town board. Uh, it's important that we consult experts, both those on the fire department payroll and those who may be able to come in from outside sources to give us additional insight uh, into navigating the new challenges facing that department. So I don't want there to be any, any confusion that the city and the city council and me personally and our administration are very much supportive of what the fire department does and especially what each of those individual firefighters do. But we are concerned, uh, about the finances and the sustainability of that department. And we're hoping that the commission will take steps to work with us, to work with the town, and most importantly, to work with the chief and the fire department staff, uh, to get the department back on track to sustainability in this new economy and this new financial environment. So I just wanted to mention that tonight. Any staff reports? City administrator.
I'm, I'm sorry about that. You did my phone during one of my coffee tips, so be thankful you didn't get to hear that. Um, no, I, uh, hopefully this, the coffee fit is done. My seventy-two hour quarantine will be finished tomorrow and I should be back at it. Um, I'm looking forward to it because I'm extremely bored just sitting at home, to be honest with you. So, um, I'm looking forward to being back to work, um, and, and, and taking it down in tomorrow night. As the mayor just mentioned, we have, uh, a joint fire commission meeting and I encourage everybody to attend that, uh, if possible.
Okay, thank you. Director of Public Works?
Uh, we did start flooding the ice rink yes, today, so, um, it's cold enough now, so. Um, and then also, um, I did, we did email you, um, just like some snow procedures and stuff. It's pretty much just the basics. Uh, first paragraph is in like the perfect storm, which doesn't happen too often. The rest of it is just, a lot of it is just adjust as you go. But it kind of shows some of the basics of where the snow goes and a little bit of why. Um, it's got the routes for the guys and some other information in there in case you get asked some of the regular questions. It doesn't have, you know, everything in it, but, um, it's got some of that stuff. And, um, working with, um, Dan and the police on some of the, um, the, some of the public nuisance things we've been hearing about lately, so that's what's going on with us, so.
Administrator Hulick's not going to make it too much longer, I don't think. Uh, uh, agenda, uh, number three is Chief of the Police Department.
I put out a press release this afternoon, referenced a suspicious person that has been going to our local businesses and claiming that he needs to stay in there to warm up while he's waiting to make a car purchase or waiting for someone to pick him up. And he's pleading that he's run out of money and, thank goodness, people out of the goodness of their heart have been giving him money. But he's coming up with a different story every time he goes into a business and he's asking to stay in there for hours at a time. So I'm a little worried about what his intentions are and what he wants to do while he's in there and who he is. So I put out the press release in hopes that businesses will report him to us if he comes in there. Um, we're a little concerned about what his intentions are. So I know the Milton Courier put it out on their website immediately, so that was very helpful. And I also put it on Facebook and we got a tip within ten minutes as to who it is and video of him, so. Facebook works. I was not a big believer in that at first, but I am now, so. We've, uh, done very well with Facebook, so within ten minutes, we have video of the guy and I think we have him identified, so. We'll go talk to him and hopefully figure out where he lives at and talk to him and figure out what he's doing.
Find out how many cars he's bought recently.
Yes.
All right. Director of the Library, Chief of the Joint Fire Department, City Clerk.
Um, okay, so this is just going to sound kind of like what I said before, but I just wanted to point or to, um, say that the City Clerk's office has received and verified, um, mayoral nomination papers for Brett J. Frazier, Anisa M. Welch, and Tom Chesmore. Um, I've also received and verified the Alderman Person nomination papers for Nancy Lottar, Anisa M. Welch, and Maxine Striegel. And I've also received and verified the Municipal Judge nomination papers for Kristen Kefler.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Finance Director.
I don't have much, but, um, the tax collection season is going pretty well. Uh, we collected forty-two percent of what we're, of the total pot, which was about three and a half million dollars through December thirty-first. So that's about on pace what it was last year.
And would you say technology has been working well?
No. We've had, uh, issues every week and some of the reports that we get from the system do not actually add up. We get reports that say like refund reports might say a hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, and then it gives me a total that's seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's kind of frustrating.
And that is technology that's provided from the county, but that we are one of the only municipalities still using.
Correct.
And that will not be the case when we switch to-
Correct.
-the new system.
But to restore confidence to our public that has paid their taxes, given what we have just said, what have you done to remedy those situations?
All, all the payments have been processed correctly.
Okay.
It's just some of the back office stuff is requiring a lot of manipulation to make sure that I get the journal entries correct into the books and all that.
So that anyone, it, it was curious, the city of Milton, for, for some reason, is one of the last remaining municipalities in Rock County that still collects our own taxes. Everyone else does it through the, almost everyone else, through, uh, the county, uh, at the county, uh, building. Uh, next year, we will be transitioning to that system. The software that they provide for us to do our own tax collection is not necessarily well-supported as we are one of the only, uh, places that utilize it. Um, it's going to provide a great savings on staff time and allow us to serve the citizens much, much more efficiently and effectively, uh, beginning with next tax season. Agenda item seven is the highlight of every evening.
Brett, Brett, can I just ask Dan a quick question? We had some residences and businesses that had back taxes that were unpaid. Have we gotten any, any, anything back from any of those?
The city is made whole on everything other than personal property every August. And real estate taxes, if, if they remain unpaid for three years, the county starts the foreclosure process. But we get all of our money by the end, by every August. It's just personal property that you're thinking of. That, that, that amount is relatively miniscule. It's a fifteen thousand dollar balance. And we're, and we're working with a collection agency. Now that the new year is underway, we'll be working with them and getting them a list and all that good stuff. We started the paperwork to get everything transitioned and so that, that's, that's, those wheels are in motion.
Great. Agenda item seven, as I said, is the highlight of the night, a motion to adjourn. Motion by Clark, second by Verwink. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.